Report over there. Uh, we're going to begin, uh, manager, uh, going to you for the, uh, the COVID briefing.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, we're going to start today's briefing from on the COVID update with our Director of Public Health, Stephanie Hayden. So I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Good morning. Um, thank you, Spencer. Um, good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again this morning. Um, we are going to make a slight change to our, um, format today. I'm going to provide a brief overview and then transition to Dr. Esq. After he completes his presentation, um, he is going to transition back to me to finish the briefing. So there are a few things that I would like to share initially and then I'll transition over to him. Austin Public Health staff are meeting, um, with the U.S. Public Health Service today. Public Health Services in the middle of a three-week project that will visit six states to research what they can do to support the local, um, health departments in this, um, at the local level and at the state level. Yesterday, they were at Harris County. They are here with us today and tomorrow they're going to, um, to the state health department. They are focusing on improving the data quality and, um, for timeliness and electronic lab reporting, case reporting and surveillance. And so they're going to develop this report and, and they're going to complete it and it will be finalized, um, by the middle of June. They have a very fast turnaround. Um, and so we met with them this morning. My staff has continued to meet with them now. The department, um, also has an initial plan to have 115 case investigators and contact tracers by the end of June. We currently have 33 staff. Um, each week we will be bringing onboarding, um, staff, um, to get us to 115. We have 11 bilingual, um, staff persons. So as we scale up, we will continue to increase the number of bilingual staff persons. Um, our social services branch, um, continues to work in our, with our priority population. Um, one of the things the staffer working on is targeted outreach. They are reviewing the household, um, living in close quarters from CDC. CDC developed that guidelines and our staff are, are reviewing that and, um, are looking at next steps with that. Working with the seniors to ensure that seniors have the most to date information on testing and services available. They are working with our, um, faith-based, um, institutions to ensure they have the resources that they need and, um, some of them are requesting, um, face covering and gloves. Our staff are coordinating through One Voice of Central Texas, uh, to ensure that, um, nonprofit agencies have any additional needs that they have as far as face coverings, um, gloves, et cetera. Our homeless, um, team is coordinating with our epidemiologists to review data on cases within the homeless population. We're working with the Trinity Center to establish a new evening meal distribution service through Revelations Foods. And so that service will be in the, in the downtown area. Staff are, um, working with the outreach staff to expand our hygiene, safety and COVID-19 education efforts for unsheltered homeless population and working with community cares, healthcare for the homeless on active surveillance testing. And we're continuing to provide services at the protective lodges, which includes, um, service coordination, um, case management, as well as behavioral health, um, services. We have, um, our partners have started the process to, um, transition, um, individuals from the protective lodge into, um, permanent housing. With our childcare, um, facilities, our staff have been working with our childcare providers during this time. They have provided one-page guidance for families on social media and have posted it on the website. They have also, um, continued to send out supplemental guidance for summer camp operators as they are identified. Um, during this time, our staff have sent over, um, have sent the guidelines and resources to over 600 childcare providers and we're providing, um, responding to numerous calls and emails from childcare providers, ensuring that their summer camp operations and regular operations and then providing them guidance through our nurse, um, line. Our staff have held, um, webinars, um, in March and they've done, um, um, one in English and one in Spanish to 158 childcare providers. We have, um, provided health and safety supplies, um, such as sanitizer, wipes, gloves, masks, thermometers, paper towels, et cetera. Um, continue to provide those deliveries to those childcare providers. In addition to that, our staff have done, um, some PSAs and social media posts. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Esq. And he is going to provide the, um, the rest of the update. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I want to start by apologizing for not sending you this slide set earlier. Our, our, our team has been working through the wee hours of the morning, uh, to analyze this data. In fact, they're still analyzing the data. Uh, but it's information that I wanted to share with you all today because it's important and not something we want to hold on to, uh, any longer. Uh, I'm going to start, uh, I'm also going to apologize because there's a lot of slides here, but it is important information, uh, that I convey to, uh, to you and to the community. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this updated slide includes data through, uh, the, the first of June. Again, the red lines are the total cases. Uh, the, the small blue lines at the bottom are new cases and the, uh, the yellow line shows the, uh, seven-day moving average of the percent increase in cases. As you can see, uh, we've continued to maintain that, that flat line when it comes to that seven-day moving average of increased cases. Uh, right now, this is equating to a doubling time of about 38 days. Uh, so that has continued to improve and we will continue to monitor that. Next slide, please. This graph is showing you, uh, what the small blue bars on the other graph were showing a little magnified. So this is the new confirmed cases by day. Uh, you can see the, uh, yellow line again is the seven-day moving average of those new cases. And, uh, and it's since the, about the 16th of May has been trending steadily upward. Uh, back on the 16th of May, we were about fif- uh, 45 cases, uh, a day on that seven-day moving average and now we're a little over 60. Uh, so again, as expected, as, uh, the community started to open up, we're seeing new cases, which has trailed that policy change, uh, by about two and a half weeks. Uh, again, at this stage, we're still in a good situation. We still have plenty of, of hospital capacity, uh, but this is one of the supporting indicators that we will be watching. Next slide, please. Uh, the primary indicator, uh, as we noted last week, uh, in the announcement of our, our key indicators dashboard, is this new admissions to the hospital in the five-county MSA. Uh, again, uh, the, the blue is the new admissions by day. The yellow is the seven-day moving average. Uh, and you can see that since about the 22nd, 23rd of May, uh, we've had that same steady increase in hospital, uh, in new admissions to the hospital. Uh, again, we expect that changes in new cases will be reflected in changes in hospitalizations about a week later. And that's in fact, what we're seeing here. Uh, again, we will continue to follow this trend. Uh, right now, our hospital is at, has plenty of capacity to care for people. Uh, in, in fact, uh, you know, there, there's some concern amongst our hospitals that individuals are delaying necessary evaluation and treatment, including emergency treatment due to concerns that there may not be capacity or there may be a danger, uh, of exposure going to the, the ER, to the hospital. Now, that's simply not true at this stage. And it's important, uh, particularly right now, we, we have that capacity for folks to seek treatment, to seek their primary care, to have their physicals, their immunizations and to go to the hospital when they need to, uh, so that they can be treated for, for COVID-19 or any other, uh, thing that, that impacts them. Next slide, please. This is a graph of our, uh, our daily hospitalizations in blue, our ICU admissions in orange and the, in the gray line, our ventilator usage. Uh, again, the dotted lines are the seven-day moving average. Uh, we continue to follow those. They've been relatively steady, uh, over, uh, the, the, the past many weeks. Uh, and again, these are metrics which are available on that key indicators dashboard at our awston texas.gov forward slash COVID-19 website. Next slide, please. This is an update of our demographics associated with hospitalizations. Uh, unfortunately, once again, we see that, uh, individuals who identify as Hispanic, uh, maintain the, uh, about a 70% of, of our new hospital admissions. So again, these are new hospital admissions for the week identified at the bottom of this slide. Uh, this is more than double, uh, the representation in the community and is of substantial concern. Uh, again, uh, I'm going to provide some further details about, uh, the impact of race and ethnicity on, uh, COVID-19 cases, uh, later in the slideshow. Uh, again, as Stephanie said, and as Stephanie will talk about further afterward, uh, we are certainly, uh, targeting the Latinx community in particular and, uh, and we continue to, uh, to advocate for individuals to be tested, to isolate themselves if, uh, if, if they become ill and, uh, and, and, and certainly to, to seek out treatment if they get worse, uh, via hospitalization to prevent the, uh, the potential for death in those circumstances. Next slide, please. This graphic is showing you the weekly case totals, uh, with the week starting, uh, on the date at the bottom. Uh, you can see last week, which started four, uh, 5:25, we had a record number of new cases at 425, uh, so a significant increase over the previous week, uh, and certainly, as I mentioned before, a departure from, uh, from where we have, have been previously. Uh, again, this is not unexpected, uh, but, uh, certainly something that we will also be, uh, monitoring to ensure that this plateaus off and doesn't continue, uh, those substantial incremental increases which may indicate, uh, that we're heading into a surge. Next slide, please. Uh, I do want to, uh, provide you some feedback on our nursing home testing initiative, uh, which, uh, followed the governor's executive order for, uh, nursing home testing. Uh, so over the past, uh, two weeks, we've tested 33 facilities in Travis County. Six of those facilities were tested by, uh, nursing homes themselves using their own staff and their own testing kits. Eight facilities were tested, uh, using their staff, but APH-provided kits and 19 facilities were tested, uh, using City of Austin staff as well as, uh, City of Austin test kits. In total, 4,128 tests were performed at 24 facilities, uh, with no known COVID-19 cases. Uh, so these were COVID naive sites. Next slide, please. So of those in the, the 24 where there were no known cases of, of COVID-19, uh, we had 1,165 residents tested. Of those two were positive, uh, which gives us a, a percent positive of 0.17%. Uh, of the staff tested, 1,806, nine were positive, 1,797 negative, which gives us a percent positive of 0.5%. Uh, again, these percentages positive are, are preliminary as we still have 778 tests pending, uh, out of those test kits. Uh, our, our team continues to follow up on those results. Uh, due to a large quantity of tests being performed at one time across the state, uh, a significant backlog has developed in relation to those tests. Uh, so we are hopeful that the remainder of those tests will come back this week so that we can issue a, a final report next week. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide is an update of our, uh, nursing home and, uh, long-term care facility clusters. Uh, you can see at the bottom, we added AA and BB, which are two new facilities, uh, which were identified through the, the testing I just mentioned. Uh, in total, four new facilities, uh, were identified. Some we're going to show on this report, which is, uh, which was completed Friday and some will show on next week's report. Uh, you can see a total of 27 new cases in the facilities we've been monitoring. Uh, two additional facilities this week were taken off the list because they've had more than, uh, four weeks of, of, uh, zero changes, which means they're inactive, um, facilities. You see that, uh, the facility listed as O is in gray, meaning that it's gone three weeks without any new cases. And next week, if there are no new cases, it will come off as well. Uh, we will continue to monitor this, monitor this situation. Our nursing home task force, uh, chaired by Dr. Jewel Mullin, has, uh, generated a ongoing, uh, testing guidance for facilities and, uh, that guidance is, has been implemented and, uh, we will, uh, continue to monitor those situations at our, our nursing facilities, uh, primarily focusing on staff, uh, but also, uh, looking to, uh, do ongoing surveillance testing of, of nursing home residents in cooperation with those facilities. Next slide, please. In relation to our, uh, our drive-through testing through Austin Public Health, uh, this is a snapshot of the last seven days of testing. So in that seven-day time period, 1,100 tests were performed. Uh, again, this is in addition to targeted testing also performed. Uh, you can see that we have results back on 1,000 of those tests. We have an overall positivity rate of 6.58% through the drive-through testing. Uh, when we break that down, which you can see at the bottom, uh, by race and ethnicity, uh, we have a positive rate in, uh, our Latinx community of 12.8%, in our African-American community of 3.6%, uh, in, in our, uh, white, uh, non-Hispanic group of 4.3%. Uh, again, you see that we have, uh, uh, one out of 49, uh, in our Asian-American, uh, community positive as well. Uh, so again, the, um, the, the, the rates, uh, across the board are relatively low with the exception of our Latinx community, uh, which is substantially higher, uh, about twice the rate of, of the, uh, positive cases of the rest of, of the community. So again, a substantial area of concern, uh, for Austin Public Health and our healthcare community. Next slide, please. Uh, so this, this data set, I, I want to talk to you about, and I'm going to have to get a little, uh, technical with you, uh, because there are lots of details which are very important in this data set. Uh, so what we've, uh, asked the team to do here is to look at a data set for individuals who had the onset of illness for COVID-19 between March and the end of April of 2020. We then followed those individuals for additional three weeks through May the 21st to determine outcomes on those individuals. Did they recover? Were they hospitalized or did they die during that time period? In fact, we're still, uh, e- evaluating those individuals with a final assessment, uh, having been performed yesterday, uh, to get a full 30-day view after the last case was, uh, uh, developed symptoms so that we can have a better idea of the complete picture of COVID-19. What we've seen in other publications, uh, including doing the Journal of Medicine, uh, publications, is that oftentimes you see a snapshot. So what do the metrics look like today for all the cases? What's the case fatality rate? This follows those individuals for an extended period of time to get a better picture of the, the total impact across our community of COVID-19. Uh, th- this data is preliminary. Again, we're going to do a final assessment, uh, which was, uh, pulled yesterday. Uh, we have not run statistical analyses on these numbers and this data has not been peer reviewed, which we intend to do and submit for, uh, peer review and publication. Uh, but there is very important information here and, and we didn't want to wait to share it until it can be published in a scientific journal. Next slide, please. So what we're seeing here is again, that snapshot of March to April 30th, uh, 2020. Uh, so this is nine individuals identified as having the onset of COVID-19, uh, with this, within this time period. Again, that means they had onset of symptoms or in the case of asymptomatic individuals, they were diagnosed, uh, in, in that two-month period. So what you're seeing here is a, is a age breakdown, uh, based on decade of life, uh, and the impact, uh, based on hospitalization and case fatality rate. On the far right column, you see the, uh, the totals for the community. Um, and you can see that that, uh, case fatality rate is 3.6%. Uh, looking to the left of that, you can see that as we suspected, there's an age-related, uh, correlation with increases in risk of, of death, uh, associated with COVID-19. Again, on the right column in the blue, you see the hospitalization rate at 16%. And once again, for the most part, with the exception of that zero to nine age group, there's an age-related increase in the rate of hospitalization, uh, peaking at the age of 80-plus with 38.5% of individuals in that age group requiring hospitalization and 26.6% of them, uh, who died. Next slide, please. So then what we did is we separated out individuals who reside in a nursing home and the rest of the community to get a closer look at what happens and what the statistics are for those who are in, in those facilities, uh, versus the rest of the community. The rest of the community will also include people who live in assisted living facilities. Uh, but this, this data on this slide is particular, uh, for those residing in nursing homes. Uh, you can see that the case fatality rate is dramatically higher, uh, for nursing home residents versus, uh, the, the community in general. So 22.5% case fatality rate. So of people who were diagnosed with COVID-19 in a nursing home setting, 22.5% of them died. Uh, 30.8% of them were hospitalized. And again, uh, you can see that the case fatality rate, uh, increases with age, uh, with 20.6% case fatality rate for 60 to 69, 21.7% for 70 to 79 and 30% for 80 and over. Uh, you see that, uh, on the left side in that zero to 49, there was a handful of cases, uh, in the zero to 49 age group of individuals who reside in nursing homes. Uh, of those individuals who, uh, were diagnosed with COVID-19, uh, none of them were hospitalized and none of them died. So again, a, a substantial impact, uh, based upon age when it comes to, to COVID-19 and certainly, uh, based upon, uh, being a nursing home resident. Next slide, please. So this slide is showing you, uh, the, the community who is not a nursing home resident. So this is everybody living outside of a nursing home that was diagnosed with COVID-19, uh, between March and April of, of 2020. Uh, again, you can see that the, uh, case fatality rate is substantially lower than when we look at that, that snapshot view of the whole community together. Uh, that risk is 1.72% with a 14.6% uh, risk of hospitalization across all ages. Again, in relation to hospitalization and, uh, case fatality rate, there's an age-related pattern that we see, uh, with that peaking again at 61.5% of those, uh, over the age of 80, uh, being hospitalized and 20.5% of those individuals dying. Um, now, s- something else that I want to mention is, uh, that, that this is the case fatality rate. So those who are diagnosed in, uh, versus those who are hospitalized and died. We're fairly confident in the numbers that were capturing the vast majority of individuals hospitalized and the vast majority of individuals who have died, uh, from COVID-19. Having said that, there is still, uh, substantially higher numbers of cases which are likely that go undiagnosed with COVID-19. So we asked, uh, Dr. Lauren Myers to give us some estimates regarding, uh, how many additional cases are likely to be out there for every case that, that is represented here. And the answer is seven to eightfold. So I bring that up because when we think about the actual infection fatality rate, the total number of people, uh, who have COVID-19 versus those who die, then that case fatality rate is probably more along the order of 0.2% across the community. And again, there is an age-related, uh, uh, pattern that we see. We won't know that number for quite some time, uh, regarding the actual case burden in this community. And we're working with the University of Texas to do a seroprevalence study to get a better idea. Uh, but it's unlikely that the, the case fatality rate is going to be substantially, uh, higher than this and more than likely will be substantially lower than this when we look at that infection fatality rate. Next slide. Uh, so this slide is showing you, uh, the age-based breakdown on hospitalization rate, uh, depending on where people live. Uh, again, you can see that, uh, for those who age 50 to 59, if they're living in a nursing home, the risk is substantially higher for hospitalization than it is for non-nursing home residents. Uh, you can see that, uh, that age 60, uh, has a similar pattern, 60 to 69, 70, 79 is about the same no matter where you live. Uh, and when we get into the 80-plus age group, uh, the, the chance of, of being hospitalized, if you don't live in a nursing home, is substantially higher. Uh, this is likely because individuals who are both over the age of 80 and in a nursing home, uh, have substantial, substantially different underlying health conditions that impact this. And in fact, anecdotally, a number of those individuals, uh, were already on hospice at the time they were, uh, infected. Some were moved to hospice quickly after they were infected due to a, a rapid decline in condition. Um, but on the far right, you can see obviously that, uh, those individuals who live in a nursing home are, uh, much higher risk of, of hospitalization, uh, than those who do not live in a nursing home. Next slide, please. Uh, again, this is, uh, the, the same graphic showing you case fatality rates. Uh, again, uh, nursing home case fatality rates are substantially higher than those, uh, who do not live in a nursing home. This just shows you graphically a little bit different, uh, but no additional information on this slide, uh, other than that visual. Next slide, please. So the, the, the two slides I'm showing you now is based upon that same data set, uh, breaking it down by demographics. And, and I want to provide a bit of caution here. As we slice information further down, what the data tells us is more challenging. And I'll explain that more, uh, in a couple of more slides, but I, I want to give you that caveat. So what we're seeing here is in the gray, the, uh, the, uh, percentage of, of the Travis County population represented by each of these, uh, race and ethnicity groups. Uh, the orange is the percent of hospitalized cases that those groups represent in that cumulative March to April time period. And the blue is the percent of cases diagnosed that those groups represent. So when you see Asian-Americans, uh, Asian-Americans represent 7.3% of our community, uh, 3.3% of cases identified and 2.5% of, uh, of those who, uh, were hospitalized. We look at white, non-Hispanic, uh, that's 48.8% of our community, 31.4% of the cases identified and 25% of hospitalizations. Uh, the obvious variations happen when we move into our Hispanic and African-American communities. Uh, so again, uh, Hispanics represent 33.9% based on, um, U.S. Census Bureau data, but they represent 56.9% of cases and 62.2% of hospitalizations. So overrepresented substantially in both the cases and in the hospitalization, uh, percentage. Now, when we move to African-Americans, uh, 8.9% of the Travis County population, uh, 8.4% of cases and 10.1% of hospitalizations. Again, we see a similar pattern where the rate of hospitalization is, uh, significantly higher than the rate of cases, uh, that they're experiencing. Next slide, please. This slide is showing you, uh, again, non-nursing home cases. Uh, this is 1,547 cases, uh, 238 hospitalizations and 30 deaths. And I bring up those numbers specifically because 30 deaths, uh, is, is a relatively small number to do an analysis on. Okay? But what this is showing is, uh, very concerning trends, uh, that, 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 that need to be shared. So again, the orange is showing case fatality rate, the blue is hospitalization rate. Uh, so this is for cases identified. Uh, so Asian-Americans had a 0% case fatality rate and 11.8%, uh, hospitalization rate. So, uh, of the cases diagnosed in each of these ethnic groups, this is, uh, the percent that died or were hospitalized. Uh, for white non-Hispanics, For white, non-Hispanics, 12.4% rate of hospitalization, 1.9% rate of death. For Hispanic population, 16.8% were hospitalized, 1.6% have died. And for our African-American community, 18.5% were hospitalized and 5.4% died. Again, you know, there's some statistical information that I'm going to share on the next slide, but the trends that we see here are very, very concerning. They suggest that our African-American population in particular has a higher rate of hospitalization and a substantially higher rate of death. But I need to talk a little bit about the statistics associated with this, which tempers the conclusions we can draw on this information, other than identifying it as a concerning trend. Next slide, please. So when we talk about statistics, we often use something called 95% confidence intervals. So this is based upon the size of the number of cases that we're counting to help us determine where there's a likelihood that the actual percentage lies. So in the circumstance, white Hispanics, case fatality rate of 1.9%. 1.9% is one point, but what the 95% confidence interval is showing us is that there's a 95% chance that the actual case fatality rate is somewhere between 0.9 and 3.5%, okay? The numbers are too small to have it narrower at this stage. For our Hispanic population, the case fatality of 1.6% has that 95% confidence interval of 0.9 to 2.7. For our African-American population, that confidence interval is very wide because the numbers are very small, 2.2% to 11.1%. And for our non-nursing home overall of 1.7%, that confidence interval is 1.2 to 2.5. Again, that number is, confidence interval is much narrower because the number of cases in that group is much larger. Again, what we see here in all four of these groups is that they all overlap in their confidence interval, which means statistically, we can't tell with scientific certainty that there's differences in the rates of death in these groups. However, we cannot wait on scientific certainty before we choose to act. We have to understand the trends, we've identified the trends, and it's time for us to take action to address these trends. You know, COVID-19 doesn't discriminate in terms of who it infects. It's going to affect people of all colors. Where it does discriminate is in our communities of color. It discriminates based on poverty. It discriminates, which is reflected on our hospitalization rates that we've seen and our case fatality rates that we've seen, and we have to continue to address those issues. And I'm going to talk a little bit more deeply about why these communities of color are seeing the impact of COVID-19 differently. It's important that we keep this in mind because we can't just address COVID-19 without addressing the longstanding disparities when it comes to access to healthcare and the social determinants of health that underlie all of these numbers that we see. If we only focus on testing for COVID-19 and isolating for COVID-19, we're not going to save more people, okay? We're going to save more people if we get to the heart of the matter, and that is providing people with the resources they need to feed themselves nutritious meals, to have access to healthcare, to have access to shelter, and the other things that are going to determine their health status. Next slide, please. So I'm going to show you a few slides on some background information that our chronic disease team have done looking at these underlying health conditions. So just a few slides. This is diabetes prevalence by demographic for 2014 to 2018. Again, three groups that we see leading the rest in terms of diabetes, African-Americans, Latinx, people over the age of 65, the three substantially higher risk groups that we've identified with COVID-19. Next slide, please. This slide is prevalence of cardiovascular disease. Again, we see that while whites and African-Americans have similar rates of heart disease, Hispanic groups are also affected. But again, these are underlying conditions which are going to contribute to complications associated with COVID-19. Next slide, please. This slide is showing you the presence of obesity in Travis County. Again, we see African-Americans and Hispanics substantially higher than the rest of the community in terms of obesity. Again, another factor which has been identified is providing complications for COVID-19. Next slide, please. And this is hypertension. Again, in this slide, you can see that African-Americans in particular have had substantially higher risk of hypertension compared to whites and Hispanics in our community, as do individuals over the age of 65. And again, hypertension has been identified as a complicating factor associated with COVID-19. Next slide, that may be the last slide. So again, Mayor and Council, we have to address our underlying health issues. We cannot just address COVID-19 without addressing those things which contribute to hospitalizations and death. I think some would suggest that we wait until later to address those things. That's a bigger issue that we have to push off. I don't think we can push it off. I think it's something that we need to address now in a discussion with Director Hayden. I think it's something that we can start to tackle now so that we can have the potential to impact individuals and communities of color during this epidemic. Hypertension is easy to diagnose and very inexpensive to treat. Diabetes, easy to diagnose, very inexpensive to treat. There is some low-hanging fruit that we really can't address in the short term that may substantially impact people's outcomes, particularly in communities of color related to COVID-19. And with that, I'll pass it back to Stephanie.
Thank you, Dr. Esq. And really, I cannot emphasize the importance because going into COVID, going into this COVID-19 response, the department had already established a public health equity and community engagement division. We know that 14.8% of our community members are uninsured. We also know that 12% of our community members live in poverty. If you overlay that information with health disparities, with poverty, and also uninsured, and then you put COVID on top of it, those are the same ZIP codes that have the most COVID-positive cases. So for us, you may ask, we've provided all of this data, we've given you all of this information, what is the plan of action? We have been working in this space for quite some time. As you all know, initially, we set up the Social Services Branch. So within that Social Services Branch, our staff have been working with nonprofit partners as well as other leaders in the community to address these concerns. We are making a pivot. We are going to work with a partner to provide some targeted testing in specific ZIP codes. We are initially starting in 78741, 78744, 45, 52, 53. We are looking at 78724 and 78660. And so basically looking at that Montopolas, Dove Springs, Rumber, Colony Park, and Flugerville to start in those areas first with our targeted testing. Currently, we've been providing some level of mobile testing. As you all know, we've gone to nursing homes and we have gone to individual homes, and so we're going to scale that up. We are developing a map, we're consulting with One Voice Central Texas, and several of our other community partners. We have identified Marian Sanchez to be a point person for us between the Latinx population and to have those conversations. In addition to that, we have three staff in Austin Public Health that are continuing to work in that space. They've already established those relationships. I have a staff person that has already been working with the Latinx community, I have another staff person that's already been working with the Asian community, and I have another staff person working with African-American community. All of these staff sit in that health equity division in that quality of life space, and so they're going to continue to have those meetings and collaborate. In addition to that, we are working on our testing platform. We know that we have to make sure that for folks that don't have internet access and unable to get on that platform, we're going to put in place the ability for individuals to call in if they want to go through that site as opposed to a site that we may be setting up mobily or at their home. They'll have the ability to work with our staff to schedule to come into that testing site, and our staff will work through all of that technology with them and get them set up at our testing site. In addition to that, our Social Service Branch is mobilizing Black and Brown communities for a unified approach, and they've already started those conversations, and it includes the county as well as our community care, as well as our nonprofits and our grassroots organizations. As I said earlier, we have 33 cases investigation and contact tracing staff, 11 of them are bilingual. As we scale up, we will continue to add more bilingual staff to ensure that they are able to have those conversations and conduct those interviews. As some of you may know, the department has developed a health equity curriculum. We are going to ensure that that health equity curriculum is looking at our tools so we can make sure that our information is culturally sensitive and our staff are adhering to those equity guidelines. Lastly, we are going to continue to ensure that the financial assistance is available or basic needs is there, and we're going to disseminate cleaning supplies and masks. So instead of it just being an effort where testing is available, we would like to offer some additional services like providing supplies and masks at those testing sites. The other thing I would like to just provide, just an update on the RISE funding, as you know, the department partnered with the Equity Office, and so the Equity Office had 30 organizations that received the RISE funding, and the department itself contracted with 20 organizations. So that's a total of 50 organizations that have received that $15 million. So as of today, with $4 million being expended, we have been able to serve over almost 2,000 people. And of those 2,000 people, over 60% of those funds have gone to the Latinx community, and then about 30% have gone to African-American community. So we are really working very hard. We know we can't do this work alone. We will continue to have meetings throughout the community with our partners and work in this space. We know we have a long way to go, but as we collaborate with others, we will get there. Thank you again for the opportunity. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director Hayden, and that concludes the presentation and briefing from our Public Health Department. I just want to acknowledge Director Hayden's work and the continued collaboration and coordination across our entire community that you continue to support. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for questions from the council, and also that we have our Chief Equity Officer, Brian Oaks, on the call. There are questions beforehand.
I think the mayor has stepped off. I'm going to throw two real quick questions, and I see her kitchen with her hand up next. The statistics there, not statistics, numbers, and of course, thank you all for all the work that you were doing around the clock. You said the 30% for RISE funds were to the different Latinx and African-American. That's of the 4 million, is that right?
That's based upon the 4 million that has been given thus far. Over 2,000 people have been.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry if I missed it. I had to step away for a second, but there, we've gotten a lot of information on, I think my staff reached out, and I haven't been able to circle back to get the answer. A lot of information on nursing homes, but there was a media article about daycares and about childcare facilities and about possible, I couldn't think of the right, it's not outbreak, whatever the word is, possibly having it, childcare facilities.
Yes.
Have any numbers on that for Austin Travis County?
Yes, right now, according to our cluster report, we are providing a cluster report every Friday to your offices, and for the period of May 14 through the 28th, we have identified one site that in a cluster, as you may know, is three or more folks. So we are aware of one site that does have a cluster. Our staff have already started working with them. As you may recall earlier in my presentation, we have been providing to just across the system to several childcare facilities, but we will provide face covering, cleaning supplies. We've provided thermometers to them as well. And what typically happens is, is that if they've been open this entire time providing services to essential workers, then, you know, we can anticipate that that may be the case. Our contact tracing staff have been interviewing those three individuals and determining their contacts as well.
And with the three or more to define clusters, does that mean for a childcare facility, it would be either a child or one of the staff? Is that right?
It could be either one.
Okay.
Yes, it could be either one.
And I know we had a long discussion about, you know, the public knowing where certain, we had it more with respect to nursing homes. Do those same laws or I guess protections, depending on who thinks it's a protection or not, apply to childcare facilities?
Yes, yes, they do. As you know, childcare facilities are licensed by the state of Texas.
Okay.
So it does apply, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then just thank you to Dr. Esq. for pointing out the significant disparities and that we need to do work now to address those. And it's great to hear the plan of possibly boots on the ground, getting people tested in ZIP codes that are majority, minority communities. Mayor, did you want to take the?
Thank you, Mayor Pritten.
And Mayor, if I could just prioritize questions for Dr. Esq., because I know he has to leave to go to the Commissioner's Court shortly.
Questions for Dr. Esq.?
Dr. Esq., I wanted to say thank you for all this information, in particular where you were highlighting what, you know, the underlying causes related to, particularly for minority communities, and what we call the social determinants of health, the poverty, difficulties with housing, jobs, and all those things that impact people's health. So I just want to, I know this has been an area of expertise and an area of passion for you as well as for our director. And so I would just want to encourage both of you to, you know... And so I would just want to encourage both of you to, to, you know, to bring to us if you, if, to, to go ahead and implement and if you need to come to us to bring to us programs that will actually help us into the future to get ahead of this curve. So I think that the targeted testing is, is an excellent approach and I really appreciate that. I'm also looking for ways in which we can, we can move our Health Department, our EMS, our, our folks in our staffing towards really targeting, addressing these health disparity issues and the social determinants of health. So I encourage you to proceed with new programs to bring back to us as a council if you need additional funding for programs or if you just need additional authority, because I think that this is really critical. And this is an example of how we can come out of the other side of this COVID crisis in a way that we are more resilient and better off. So I wanted to thank you for that.
I had to, to, to jump off and I've come back on, so this may be what you've covered and it may be what Anne just talked about, but I want to make sure, Dr. Esq., that you have a chance to address it. I appreciate that, that Stephanie's going to be bringing to us a, a strategic plan on how to deal with the outbreak in the Hispanic community that'll, that'll actually put into a plan so we can see the different elements of how it is we're addressing. But beyond that, you had talked to me briefly about using this opportunity to not only test susceptible populations, but to also screen susceptible populations so that we can not only deal with the immediacy of this moment, but also use this opportunity to do screening for the conditions that are making people susceptible so that people can get treatment for those things so that they are in a better position if this virus comes back in September, October, or for the rest of their lives. And, and, and that I think is, is something that I'm real excited to hear you mention because I think that goes to one of those elements of using this moment and this funding and this opportunity to actually fundamentally change what we're seeing in our city. Can you address that for just a moment? Yeah, unless you already did.
Yeah, no, Mayor, you know, we, we, we've got a, a condition, COVID-19, which is, is placed a, a large magnifying glass on conditions which we knew were out there. We've known for years, for decades, that these disparities were there. And, and I think the shameful thing is that the things that I mentioned, in particular hypertension and diabetes, they are very easy to diagnose. Every single one of our EMTs and firefighters, every single nurse and nurse assistant and medical assistant, every single one of them can diagnose both those things. And the, the cost of treatment for those two things is extremely small. And I'll tell you quite honestly, Mayor, you know, I, I, I'm an emergency physician, an EMS physician, and we see people over and over and over again from the African American community, Latinx community in Austin, back when I was in Houston, coming to the ER over and over again for complications of these diseases. And somehow, as a society, we have not managed to be able to find a way to provide basic healthcare for all people who live here. But what we will do is we will pay for their emergency care. Instead, if we had invested those resources upfront and paid for the screening and paid for the medication, every time somebody comes into my ER with a complication from hypertension, it reminds me that I could have paid for their medication for their entire life rather than pay for that one ER visit. And we've got to, I think, realign our, our, our investments as a community. We have to think about the investment in prevention. And I think that this COVID-19, as we're contacting thousands of people who don't otherwise have access to healthcare, that's an opportunity that we can't pass up to do these simple screens, to connect them to resources to help so that we can not only help impact the, the complications and death from COVID-19, but also impact those individuals for the rest of their life. And I think we can do that. I think it's low hanging fruit. And I think that Stephanie and I can work on a plan with other city departments to operate, operationalize that soon.
I like that a lot. Please tell us how we do that. Please make that part of the strategic plan. Mayor Priton, I'm going to go back to this. I'm going to turn the, the, um, to you for a moment. So Mayor Priton.
Okay, yeah, I just want to thank you, Dr. Esq. I mean, I feel like there was a lot of nodding going on only because we have been, you know, trying to push more money into public health for some time now, you know, over the last six years on this council, working on a budget. And, and we have, we've significantly increased it. And as we continue to have these discussions on, we can't go back to normal. That needs to include big vis, big ideas and big visions like, do we offer a citywide healthcare plan? I mean, just as you said, I, I can't tell you the number of times I've said, as a firefighter, when you're sending a, a million dollar fire truck to somebody for an emergency call, that you, you have memorized their address. You know their name when that address comes on the tone and is telling you where to go. You know it's Mr. So-and-so. It's, we're going to see Mr. Smith because of the numerous times we have sent our emergency EMS and fire to those addresses. We could have invested that money so much differently. So, reaching the choir in, in a lot of ways, but thank you for those, those words. Councilmember Harper Madison.
You probably noticed I was hiding out in the corner, but Dr. Esq. drew me out. I, I will just, you know, I'll echo your sentiment. I mean, that's exactly what we're talking about here. So when we're talking about systemic change, right? We're talking about all the systems. It's not just one system because all the systems feed one another. And so I just, Dr. Esq., I'd like to say thank you very much for your passionate presentation and that information because that's exactly what we're talking about. And I just really appreciate that you said it in a way that was so candid and frank. And we get the opportunity, I think oftentimes, one, we're, as a municipality, we're risk averse, but then, you know, I think we're also cost averse. But if we're recognizing the fact of the matter is, we are, you know, I hate to even think about human life and suffering and illness in a way like we spend money or save money. But the truth of the matter is like, we're talking about money, right? And at the end of the day, the investment should be in the long-term greater good and wellness of people. And I think you just validated what everybody's been trying to imply, which is if we invest in people for the long-term greater good and their health being a part of that component, that we save money. And so thank you for really just pointing out the, what felt like the obvious, but, you know, having the professionals say it, the experts say it is definitely helpful. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Explain it again. Did you raise your hand? I'm sorry. No, Councilmember Kassar.
I echo everyone's comments and I appreciate you raising up the underlying health conditions. I agree with all of that. So I, I want to ask questions about something different because I think you've highlighted that part well. When you presented to us last time or the time before last, you mentioned that we were tracing most of these cases back to the fact that these are the folks that are going to work or these are people and households of folks that are going to work? Is that still generally the case?
That is, that is generally the case. Again, our, our team is also working on identifying percentages of community transmission versus household transmission. So as they, they complete that data set, my hope is, is to talk more about how much is happening outside the house and how much inside the house. Again, Councilmember, it's, it's really very important, particularly in, in those vulnerable communities of color, that we continue to advocate for individuals to utilize our isolation facility to really break that cycle of transmission within the household. You know, talking to our, our investigators, it's very clear that once there's a case in the household, substantial portion of those individuals in the household are getting it, somewhere in the neighborhood, a fifty percent risk i- in those close contacts. So we, we really need to, to work together to try to encourage people to break down some of the barriers or concerns that folks have about utilizing those free facility, that free hotel room to, to really separate and protect their families. It is going to be critically important for us, particularly as, as we see cases increase.
And we just got a memo from Public Health on some of the high-risk worker stuff, which I appreciate, but, but it seems to me that it would be really useful that, that you have is really good. Seems to me that it would be really useful to know what percentage of folks that are going back to work, even if they have an older family member, don't have access to unemployment insurance. And when you're looking at those numbers in the Latino community, it'd be really useful for me to know how many of them are coming from primarily Spanish-speaking households as we think about both outreach and resources available to people. Are, are those numbers we're trying to track down or those numbers we're going to have? I, I think it would be helpful, but I'm interested in your, in your thoughts on things like, what are these cases coming from people without access to unemployment insurance so they have almost no other option? Is this coming from Spanish? I mean, those, I, I suspect some of that is true, but we don't, I haven't seen hard numbers on it yet.
And, and Councilmember, I can, I can share some stats with, with you and council regarding funding sources for individuals who are hospitalized. Last time I looked, that, that percentage of individuals who are hospitalized without a payer source is about thirty percent. So substantially higher than the, the rate of uninsured in our community, which tells us again, as we anticipated, that this is disproportionately affecting those without underlying access to healthcare. On the, on the note regarding the language of preference, I have asked the epidemiology team to add that to the, the case investigation so that we can start tracking language preference. So I'll, I'll get an update on that and let you know the status of that. I, I agree it is important and something that's not been part of the state's or CDC's data collection tool, but we do have the ability to add that.
That'd be helpful. And I didn't, I, I know, I had heard the health insurance number, but I meant the unemployment insurance number because then someone, if somebody doesn't have unemployment insurance, then they may not have any other form of income other than going to work, even if it's recommended against. So I'd be interested in knowing if we're tracking or getting some sense of that as well.
If we can add that, that item too. Thank you.
Does anybody else have questions for Dr. Esq.? Councilmember Kitchen?
I want to thank you for the, the information you provided about what we're seeing in the nursing homes and just wanted to make sure I heard something correctly. So the assisted living facilities, I think there's seventy-five of them or so in the Austin area, those stats are not separated out at this point? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And did I, can I conclude from what we saw that if an individual of, of a certain, you know, at certain ages, say a seventy-five-year-old, is more likely to be hospitalized from COVID if they're living in a nursing home as opposed to living in the community? Is that what this data is showing us?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so, okay. That's, that's what I was thinking it was telling me. Do we have similar kind of comparison in terms of data about actually being diagnosed with COVID as opposed to hospitalized? We may not have that level of data.
Can, can you clarify that question?
Also, for example, I can see the risk associated with hospitalization for a senior who's living in the community versus living in a nursing home. But I'm wondering if there's data about the, just the risk of being diagnosed with COVID or coming down with COVID, whether or not they end up in the hospital because not everybody that's diagnosed with COVID. So I, I was just wondering if you had that level of data.
Councilmember, we, we don't have that data. That's, that's an attack rate. And, you know, the, the seroprevalence study that I referred to early will help us identify better, you know, what that attack rate is in different communities. I, I did want to mention a correction regarding the, the risk of hospitalization for a seventy-five-year-old. Looking at the, at the graph that compares the three, it's, it's very similar between overall nursing home and in, out of nursing home for that particular age group.
It's the older ones. Right, right. It's older, it's the eighty-plus where we saw a difference. Is that right?
I'll, I'll have to look back at the slide. There, you know, there's some, there's some variations. Eighty-plus actually has a higher rate of hospitalization in the community versus the nursing home. Again, that goes back to the, the likelihood that.
Right.
Individuals were more ill to begin with and succumbed quicker.
Okay. Last question then. I, I, I really appreciated the, the guidance that was developed by our Nursing Home Task Force with regard to testing and in particular, the, the protocols or guidance, I guess is a better word, around retesting. And so I appreciate that. And then, so I think, I thought that that was very, very thoughtful. And I look forward to our community and the nursing facilities following that guidance. My question has to do with the assisted living facilities. Have we gotten to testing them yet? I know that they are, that they are slated to be tested, but have we done any testing in the assisted living facilities yet?
I'll, I'll have to get with the team, Councilmember. I don't believe we've done any widespread testing. I, I will say that, you know, we, we're going to review the, the testing guidance that we issued a, a couple of weeks ago regarding nursing homes, given the data that we have. Again, that we, we have a very small percent positive amongst residents, point one seven percent so far. So we'll, we'll likely need to tweak that a bit and, and look to surveillance testing. So I asked University of Texas to identify, you know, what's that number? What's that percent of individuals in, in COVID naive facilities that we need to do and maintain to be able to detect cases? Now, they go substantially higher when we talk about staff, but even then, it's point five percent so far. And again, a- as we consider how to address the, the issues of COVID-19 in our community, we do need to focus on, on two major groups. You know, our, our, our poor and our communities of color as well as our, our elderly population. And if, you know, I think the data shows us, if we have creative policies which can effectively address those two groups, the risk for the rest of the community is much, much smaller than, than we, we once thought. So I, I think this is a, a call for action for us. I think it's a call to say, if we want to, you know, keep the economy open and open it further, the trade-off has to be, we have to make investments where we failed to make investments in the past. And that's in those communities of risk, both, of, of communities of color and our elderly population so that we can protect them better.
Okay. I'll follow up, I'll follow up offline with, with you and with Stephanie on our, our, our progress on the testing in the nursing, in, in the assisted living facilities. So, thank you.
Good morning. I think this is a question for Mr. Esq. and if it ends up being with, and something for Director Hayden, then I can wait until Mr. Dr. Esq. is done. So I really appreciate the approach that both of you are suggesting, which invites us to make investments during this COVID time that create greater resilience for our community down the line. I wanted to ask, it, it seems like there, there are pieces of this that we would be able to do more at least if we had support from the state and the federal government. So first, I wanted to encourage the city manager and our intergovernmental relations to work with you to make sure that this type of information is communicated to our state and federal delegations because I think it, it creates an opening, a different way of arguing for something we've been arguing for, for a long time, that within the context of COVID may allow us to take certain steps and also in the context of an, an election cycle. But then, secondly, I, I wanted to just ask, what are the, can you highlight some of those pieces that are, you know, really up to the, to the state, whether it's the Medicare or, you know, pieces where, where having those pieces. pieces where having those pieces of the puzzle would really make a difference for us to make additional progress beyond what we might be able to do with our own resources?
I think, I'll start by answering, and Director Hayden may want to add in. You know, I think there's a lot that can be done from the state and federal level to address these issues. And I think it's really about creating some bipartisan support for things which we can all agree on. I think access to primary care is one of those things. It is inexpensive and it's an incredible investment. I think further investment in public health at the state, federal, and local level is another one of those things that is a relatively small dollar investment that has an incredible return. Right now in the United States, we spend about four cents on the dollar, the healthcare dollar, on public health. We trail many, many other countries in terms of our success in public health. And a lot of the reason why we do so poorly when it comes to comparisons in our healthcare systems in other countries is how we treat our communities of color. It's about the inequalities. It's about the disparities between groups. America has incredible health systems. Now, we have incredible hospitals. We do incredible research. But that doesn't equal incredible healthcare for the community unless it means care for everybody. And I think that together, you know, this community and this state and this country need to agree on what is reasonable and what we can do in the short term to address these longstanding issues. And I think uniform access to primary care services is very low-hanging fruit that we could all agree on.
Director Hayden? Director Hayden?
Sorry about that. The only thing that I would add is that we know from our experience in working in this space that if there's more funding for prevention efforts, a significant amount of chronic disease can be prevented if folks are provided that, you know, assistance that they need. For example, you know, there are diabetes education classes that the department typically offers. But we also have community members that offer the same diabetes education classes. So being able to, you know, look at those upstream factors that can really prevent the onset of disease is really important, too. So that's just the only other thing I would offer.
And then in terms of the plan, you know, I hope it will also, you know, include doing a little bit more of the work that we've done to help people to access the healthcare options that are available and making sure that we're connecting folks up with those resources that do exist, you know, through Obamacare that maybe people aren't signed up for as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this? Yes, Councilmember Reh3, and then Councilmember Tovo.
I was having trouble with my computer earlier and I couldn't sign on. But I would like to ask a question is, you know, I in my district have a lot of independent senior living housing. And how do y'all trace when someone becomes infected and they go not to our hospitals, but to a minor emergency hospital or something and their symptoms are very mild, but they come back? How do y'all trace those people who they've been in contact with that have been infected?
Councilmember, regardless of where an individual is tested, those results all come back to Austin Public Health, which is required under state code. So it's a matter of, if they're tested somewhere else, it's a matter of us getting the information and calling that individual. You know, through our public health testing site, that is automated to some extent. So the individual gets notified and that contact tracing starts and that case investigation starts via email or text message saying, please tell us where you've been and who you've had contact with. But primarily, it's phone calls to people, it's asking questions and doing an investigation so that we can identify where they've been, who they've contacted, so that we can contact those individuals and let them know they need to be tested.
Yes, because, you know, some of these independent living facilities are, you know, I have Rebecca Van Johnson here in my district as a neighbor and they have somewhere like 280, 90 people there living in that. It's a 16-story building. And, you know, if one of them get infected, and especially some of these people are very social among each other. You know, they always used to have their birthday party once a month for everybody there. They had cakes and all that. So they do get around and talk to a lot of people. So that's what I was just like, wanted to find out. Do y'all track it when you go and ask these people that have been infected? Do you ask them also that have they been throughout the building and who they had contact with?
Yes, so they ask information similar to, you know, a detective. You know, we call them disease detectives because that's exactly the information they collect. You know, we continue to remind people through our risk stages about how to decrease their risk of transmission. And certainly individuals who are higher risk, including individuals over the age of 65, we still encourage them to avoid social interactions. And if they're going to be around other people to maintain that social distancing, that masking, you know, it's challenging for us to completely eliminate the spread of disease. But, you know, when we get groups together, particularly groups that are at high risk, it can often be a recipe for substantial impact in death. And so we remind everybody to continue to monitor that staging to get the up-to-date advice on how they should proceed to manage the risk for themselves and their family.
And I also want to thank all the nonprofit groups and all the other groups that have bought masks and have been delivering to all these assisted living and independent living facilities. You know, that's always been the alarm that I had. I was always fearful that, you know, we couldn't get the, at the beginning, everybody was saying, "Don't wear masks, don't wear masks," you know. And because we're trying to save them for the emergency rooms for first frontline people. So, and, you know, that was very alarming to me. So I'm very glad that, you know, y'all are stepping up and working with all these other groups also. And my office is also distributing masks to different nonprofit groups so they can distribute to these independent nonprofit and childcare and assisted living, nursing home, and independent living facilities. Because I'm as the senior, I'm 70 years old, so I'm at one of the high risks. So I had to really take care of myself. So, and it's very alarming. And you're right, you know, the young people are not the ones that, there are so few of them that, you know, have existing illness and condition, existing condition. So, you know, but you're right that we should isolate ourselves from these younger people that are going out there. You see them out there, you know, and they're not practicing the need to social distance and wearing masks. And most likely, it's going to be like a fluke to them. And there are people in our age and our stage. And you're exactly right, I was one of the people that thought Menudo was the champion of breakfast, you know. And I had to give that up, you know, because, you know, it wasn't. And it was really affecting my health. But those are the things that, you know, how we grew up. And we're seniors now and it's really, we're paying the price right now. So thank you for doing all that. Saying the things you're saying that we really need to do is to keep people like that away from other people that are infected until we finally get a vaccine for it. So I want to thank you on that.
Yes, well, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple comments and requests, really. Director Hayden, you had mentioned, first of all, I just want to say I really just want to express my appreciation. Your department has been so busy responding to the current crisis.
You're muted, Kathy.
Really? Can you hear me now?
Yes, now, yes.
Okay, thanks. I must have put my hand on the keyboard. I'm not sure where you lost me, but I was just expressing my appreciation to the Public Health Department and to Director Hayden's leadership for responding so well to the current crisis, but also looking at ways to really enhance the kind of preventative care that the Public Health Department has advocated for so long. And as Mayor Potem Garza said, it has long been the case that we needed to better fund those programs. And so I think public health, again, has long advocated and has implemented some very important programs with regard to preventative care. And we have failed as a city to fund them sufficiently. I really, I think the plan that you laid out in terms of, you know, from appointing staff liaisons to identifying particulars of codes is really sound. And again, I just want to applaud you for taking that kind of deliberative approach at a time where I know you're really just maxed out. I wonder what the next step is in terms of providing that information to the public? Is there intent to make some of those details? I don't believe that was in our presentation. I just wondered if we would get some additional information about which ZIP codes. I didn't capture all the ZIP codes that the mobile testing would be available and some of the other detailed information. And so would request that at the appropriate time that that be provided, really to the public as well as the council.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Tovo. We are definitely going to make that information public. Mayor Adler mentioned a draft plan that we're putting together. We are also working on a forum that we are going to have on the 13th of June. And we will be providing each of your offices with a flyer for that information. And that forum is basically to talk about what we are talking about right now and to review that draft plan with the public, but get feedback from them as well. We want to be very deliberate during this time to make sure that we get as much feedback from the public as we can, because it's going to take all of us, as I always say. It takes all of us to show up and all of us to do our part. We all have a role to play. And so we will be providing all of that information to you all as well. But it is more to come.
Thank you very much for that additional information. You know, looking at today's presentation from Dr. Esqot, from you, Dr. Esqot, thank you. There's a lot of material in there to go through and I don't have any immediate questions. You've answered a lot of them today. But it occurs to me that it would be really useful, city manager, to have those really detailed presentations available to the public all in one place. And so I'm not sure, obviously, they're attached to our council meeting work sessions. But if there's a way to pull together those presentations so that members of the public can really see the week-to-week information as it developed, I think that would be really valuable. And again, I don't know whether the right place is the COVID-19 site, which is really about sending people to resources they need immediately. And this is more broader info, but I just offer that suggestion. And then lastly, I wanted to mention something that refers back to a comment Mayor Potem Garza made about the idea of having a citywide healthcare plan. Back in early February, a constituent in my district contacted us to tell us about a plan that Lubbock had just initiated, where it was led by their Chamber of Commerce. And it, in essence, as I understand it, allowed small businesses to become part of the city's healthcare, health insurance plan. And it's a really interesting model because it had come through the Chamber of Commerce and through, you know, had a tie to the business community. We did forward that in my office onto our Economic Development Department as well as our HR department with a request that that they let us know if they had heard any, you know, if they had any information or had any ideas about that. So I'm really eager to continue to explore that idea. And just wanted to mention that in this forum. I know, Councilmember Kitchen, you have a lot of information about that as well and may know of some other cities where that's been the case. But I'm very eager to see, to get some more information about that as a way of really addressing one of the many health equity issues that came out today about the level of, this particular one about the level of uninsured individuals in our community.
It's a neat idea. Councilmember Flanagan?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a great idea, the healthcare plan, to explore it. It might be an appropriate place to ask CAN to help lead some of those conversations. The Community Management Network, since their board, which I chaired this year, but it's a one-year gig. That board includes Central Health and Integral Care and Seton and St. David's. And it has all the players at the table you would need to make that work. So that might be a way for us to help move policy forward, but not literally make everything the council's job when we're pretty strained in our bandwidth as it is. Dr. Esqot, thank you for the way you laid all that out. I'm very, I'm just really inspired by it. And one thing, also, thanks for getting the additional dashboard out that tracks the seven-day hospitalizations average. I know I was getting a lot of inquiries about it in the public about how we were tracking the progress on the stages. And so to have that dashboard up is really helpful and it gives people a sense of control over where things are headed, even though the line is pretty flat right in the middle of stage three. But, manager, I really want, there's definitely, I'm certainly hearing it. I am in agreement with moving forward on how to explore this deep question about public health outcomes. And you're going to have to help us craft a process here. And I don't want to wait for someone to have to bring a resolution for you to do it. So, you know, I would love to see some work on that over the break, even if it's just staff coming back to us in August saying, "All right, here's how we're going to move forward on this stuff." Because I think, as Councilmember Harper-Madison said, all this stuff is tied together and we need to be finding a way to work on all this stuff at the same time when it's still just 11 of us on the council.
Just real quickly to reiterate, the hospitals asked us to reinforce two messages. One of them is the importance of that 10-day daily average of 10, so that people in the community are tracking that and potentially modifying behavior as that number moves. But it's real important to keep sending everybody back to that 10-day number. And the second message they've asked us to amplify is the one that Dr. Esqot made in his presentation, which is people should not be avoiding going to the hospitals now. Their concern is that by talking about hospitalizations, we might be scaring people away. And we're now having people that are showing up at the hospitals later than they would have otherwise. And we need to tell people that now, more than ever, is the time for them to be going to hospitals to receive treatments that are appropriate for them. Mayor Potem?
Just to quickly speak to what the mayor just said, that is a very, as a firefighter, that is a very cultural thing, is you wait longer. I think our brown and black community waits longer, even before COVID. They would wait longer because of concerns with either bills or experiences that are longer, because of concerns with either bills or experiences that our black mothers have in maternal situations, where your shouts for help are not listened to. And you get, you get to a point where you feel like, this has to look really serious before I go, otherwise I'm not going to be, you know, believed. So that's part of it, too. I just wanted to quickly comment on the health insurance discussion that's happening. It's a great one and an important one. We also have a public health committee, council committee. And so maybe, you know, I do not think, again, the city can solve everything, but I think it's important that we are able to convene, if it's CAN and Central Health and the county, maybe there's a, it's an item that can be on a public health committee meeting soon to have that discussion.
Sorry. Ken?
Thanks, all. This is a great discussion. I'm going to send an email to connect you all to Jim Rodriguez. He's the executive director of TexHealth Central Texas, which is an existing program, a nonprofit program that provides health insurance through small businesses. It also has a subsidy attached to it, so for workers below a certain wage, they can get the cost of any insurance covered or reduced. And it's been, it's a program that, Jim is an expert, Jim Rodriguez is an expert in this area, and I'm sure would love to talk with all of you about how to take what he's done and make it broader to fill in the gaps and/or to do something entirely different. I know when we talked about this a number of years ago, he indicated that he was interested in being helpful. So I'm specifically mentioning TexHealth Central Texas right now, because it is an existing program. There's a website. Small businesses can go to that website if they need help for their, with the cost of insurance for their workers, for workers below a certain wage level. So I encourage people to do that.
All right, then, I think we're set. Director Hayden and Dr. Esq., thank you so much for joining us. The mayor suggested that before we go to the next two reports, that we pull up the two polled items, I think, so that we're fresh when we talk about the budget question in anticipation Thursday. So I'm going to go ahead and do that. Let's do that one first, and then, Councilmember Pol, then we'll come back and get your poll.
Mayor, right before we go into that, I wanted to not, I wanted to save only my questions for Dr. Esq., but I wanted to share one other thought on the COVID topic, if that's okay?
Yes.
So, manager, and I don't know if Director Hayden is still on, we did get the response on some of the high-risk worker resolution that we passed, and I appreciate that. I just want to lift up for you and for the council that I don't, I think the intent of the memo is to have addressed one part of it, but there's still another part that I think everyone is working on, which is the question of what, how do we have some resource center or place for people that don't have unemployment insurance or can't get pandemic assistance? What do they do to make sure that they don't violate the mayor's order and potentially put themselves at risk, or an older household member at risk? That stuff wasn't addressed in the response. And I, what I anticipate or expect is that there will be a response on that part, too. I think our staffs are working together to continue working on that, but I just wanted to raise that up. That seems like one piece, which is some of the outreach and the like, and a strategic plan is in place, but there's the other part that I just seem still unfinished. And I know some of that is part of the budget conversation we're having, but I just wanted to note that.
Appreciate that. This is obviously an ongoing discussion. We wanted to get as much information to you as soon as we could, but as you said, we'll have an updated discussion as we have more information.
I appreciate that. Thank you, manager.
We've also had, Greg, one of the nonprofits, it's part of our array of nonprofits, Getting Care is Funding, has offered to help create a pilot where the city would do, APH would do these testing, and they would help work to provide people the isolation facilities if they had a positive test, so as to make that as low risk as possible. And I, and I hope and urge our APH to move forward with that kind of pilot, so that we can actually see if that increases the number of people that are comfortable getting tested. I think that'll be good. Councilmember Alton?
Thank you. I just wanted to add and just remind us that when we did pass the rise funding, I included an amendment that gets right at this issue. And so, you know, to the extent that there's funds in there or whatnot, we have an opportunity that's already in that resolution to address the wraparound services that folks who are positive or at risk are experiencing due to COVID.
Okay. Anything else on this before we move on?